City Council public hearing for dune management. I think that's the only thing on the agenda, but I need to have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Before we get started, I'm going to try and line this out for everybody. We expect a lot of folks to speak, and I hope you do. That's what we're here for. I do have a set of rules that staff has lined out, and I'm going to read them to you. And then I'm going to add a few of my own, maybe. Let's see what they say. So this is a public hearing before the Cannon Beach City Council on the four dune management update amendments, management plan update amendments. And our protocol for our hearing will be, if you would like to speak, please place your name and address on one of the sign-in sheets at the door. It's in the foyer or being circulated. I don't know if we've got one circulating. And check the box confirming your interest to speak. You'll be given three minutes to speak at the direction of the mayor, me, and the city council. A time limit is critical to make sure that all persons can be heard. However, you may submit unlimited written testimony, provided it is sent to City Hall by 5:00 PM Tuesday, October 1st. Groups or the representatives will not be given extra time to speak. So representatives from those organizations should consider this their presentations and divide speaking responsibilities. Individuals will not be permitted to cede time to other individuals. Individuals will be permitted to speak once per public hearing session, although the mayor and city council will reserve the right to allow individuals to repeat within consideration to the agenda. As noted above, written public comments will be closed as a business 5:00 PM, October 1st. All public comments should be sent to dic@ci.cannon-beach.or.us. Okay? So that's Colleen's. Send it directly to her. It's also available on the website. Or at City Hall Four Dune Post Office Box 368 Cannon Beach, Oregon 97111. 110. You'd think I'd know that. Jeff is going to give us a little staff report on stuff in a second. I am going to, one of our challenges, try to figure out how, I don't want people just lining up unless you all behave and want to line up. What I'm thinking is I will check names off the list. If Colleen could get me one of the lists. Sorry. And what I'll do is I'll call a name from the list that I have. And if you want to speak at that moment, you can. If you want to wait a while, and I'll go back through the list. That way I can check off folks, and we can do this in kind of an orderly fashion. What I might do is ask if the representatives want to speak first, those folks who feel like they're representing a group or something.
And we had a time to sign up if you were going to speak, so there's no box.
There is no box. Okay. Well, I'll just run through names. If you don't, that's fine. I can check you off, and you can speak at one of the other meetings, because we do have, hang on. Let me run through those real quick. Saturday, September 14th, at 9:00 AM, there will be another public hearing. Saturday at 6:00 PM, there will also be another, the third, public hearing. September 17th, there will be a 5:30 PM fourth public hearing. October 1st, you know, the records will be closed. October 7th, there is a possible, depending on how many more people want, wish to speak, a fifth public hearing, and at that point, we will close for consideration. We will, the city council will also have a site visit on the 7th. Okay. With that, I will pass this off to Jeff to get us started. Before that, as I run through the list, we might take breaks every once in a while. I know how arnerous this can get, and I need to use the restroom every once in a while. And Bruce is going to have an announcement at some point at one of the breaks for our tours, which was interesting. So I'm going to pass this over to Jeff right now for staff report.
Just something, you had asked if any of the representatives of the group or whatever wanted to speak, and I don't know if anybody had a chance. These folks indicated they would like to go early.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody else wants.
And was there a timer?
We have, again, I didn't say this, but we've got this cute little big timer. I will be using this to give you, it's exactly 3.03 seconds, three minutes, I'm sorry.
We're going to wrap this up.
And I'll do this after you've given your name and address, because that's important for Colleen. So as soon as you've given me your name and address, boom, I'll flip this over, and then I'll be watching that and listening, and we'll go to this, okay? Jeff, please.
I'm going to try to do this in three minutes now. But I'm Jeff Adams, I'm the community development director, and I will try to keep it brief, because I believe most of you are familiar with this. But I do often want to just frame kind of what we're here tonight for. As a staff, I always think of my mother. If my mother's got to come, I don't expect her to read the entire Allen Report. She can if she wants, but I want to be able to at least kind of convey what these meetings are about and why it's important to the general public. So first off, I wanted to touch on, there's four main documents that really started with this, and I'll get to it at the end of the thing, how you find these materials if you haven't seen these materials. But this is the new science, and that's really why we started this, was that our current management plans were out of date, and they're begging for some new science. And so we have some new science from Dagami with Dr. Allen taking the lead on that. And that is referred to as Exhibit A1 in our exhibits list. Then we have the four dune management plan that came through the Planning Commission, and they're the ones that crafted that, the new management plan, and that's A2 in the documents. A3 is the comprehensive plan policy changes. Those amendments to our comprehensive plan that go along with the four dune management plan and the cop plan as a component at, I like to call the 30,000-foot level. And then down at that 10,000-foot level is the zoning ordinance, the things I work with every day and administrate as the city planner. And so those are the main kind of documents that were here. Of course, those weigh in the decision here tonight, but your voice and your comments and what you're bringing to this matter is just as important as what's before them with the science. And so criteria, this is what's the, what they have to go by. So the city council will make these decisions upon the municipal code, section 1786070A, applicable policies in the comprehensive plan, and of course, the statewide planning goals, especially GOAL 18 beaches and dunes. So that municipal code section 178670A is, before an amendment to the text of the ordinance codified in this title is approved, findings will be made that the following criteria are satisfied. One, the amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Two, the amendment will not adversely affect the ability of the city to satisfy land and water use needs. So it's very, it's fairly broad, what your guys' criteria or standards are, but with the science, the new science, the new plan, what you'll have before you as far as due public testimony, you will have plenty of evidence to put forward towards your standards. And any planner loves to hear those citations and what drives those kind of decisions. So that comprehensive plan policies are in your packet, and those are part of those comprehensive plan policy amendment changes, and with strike-throughs and underlines as what's being changed within your comprehensive plan. And those are basically sand dune construction, they deal with four dune management policies and remedial dune grading. And as part of the comprehensive plan policies, they are broken down pretty much into management areas, four dune management policy, remedial dune grading, built along these different management areas, and you'll see the map there. We had the displays last night, and that is also one of the exhibits that's out there Statewide planning goals, especially GOAL 18 beaches and dunes, and that's main purpose is to conserve, protect, where appropriate develop, and where appropriate restore the resources and benefits of coastal beach and dune areas, and to reduce the hazards to human life and property from natural or man-induced actions associated with these areas. And so as you go through these, there's really two procedural or policy kind of frameworks you could work through these as we get into deliberations. And those could be document-based, we might work through that 30,000 down to the 10,000-foot level and just go through the text that way. Another way is through the topic base, which is how Denise outlined it last night, and I'll outline these main topics before you tonight. So the first one is grading for views. This comes, this is taken from the Planning Commission's addendum that says, "The Planning Commission recommends that the city council carefully consider whether to allow and do grading for views at all, and that you adopt the accompanying four dune management plan only to the extent that the council decides to allow such grading activities." Vegetation's the other main point, and as Dr. Hacker said last night, there's really three main types, the European beach, American beach, and the American dune. And what those do is they capture the sand differently, build different types of dune systems, and there seems to be a new type of hybrid that's making its way into the fourth type. So I think each one of these is evolving science in that, but Dr. Hacker's report and her materials are also, some of the exhibits are online. If you haven't had a chance to be there last night, please review those. And so second up is seasonality. So what I've done is tried to take portions of the four dune management plan, that first is from page four, talks about the timing of sand removal, and specifically show you some of the areas that this plays out in the text, at that 30,000-foot level and at the 10,000-foot level. So that in the Cannon Beach Municipal Code, seasonality is actually handled in many places, but really one of the key places in 174260A3J for those following along. And that talks about revegetation of graded areas is mandatory, and then it talks about it should be done immediately, if at all possible. So how does this play out down where I have to administer it is different often than what's up at the top at the four dune management plan or comprehensive plan level. And we can get into that further when we start going through the deliberations. Wildlife, four dune management plan, page three, talks about, "City Cannon Beach will ensure that grading does not negatively impact wildlife, including razor clams." And so this is where it actually gets into that centimeter discussion, and you can see it play out further in other parts of the ordinance. Slope is the next one up, and that plays out at my daily permit level in 174260A3C, where it talks about placement of sand on the beach may be permitted as part of a four dune grading permit if sand deposition does not exceed a depth of 12 centimeters placement of sand, and then 25 to 33 percent of the slope. And so there's guidance in this, and as Denise said, Dagami has documentation that states what they say, there is some conflict in certain areas, and that's for you guys to kind of work through as the Planning Commission tried to work through this. Beach access was the, one of the other topics discussed at the Planning Commission, and as Denise says here, during the Planning Commission process, residents brought up questions increasing beach access near larger dunes. The Planning Commission determined the question was not relevant to what they were discussing. There are mechanisms within the ordinances and within state permitting that allows that if someone wants to come forward with that. So there are certain areas that were discussed, and they felt, the Planning Commission felt there was no need for action on. In the permitting, in 174260A3K, they discuss maintenance activities may include and go into different components of grading, four dune shaping, and this is actually handled elsewhere in section of 174260A11. And so these two things, this one's talking about the cumulative volume of grading under maintenance, but there's actually two components to maintenance, and this is handled separately. It might be something, at least from an administrative perspective, we might want to look at as a technical change as we work through these documents. So just like the Planning Commission made their recommendations in administering these and looking through these, you might want to compare certain things in there and say, how would this work in actual practice? And I'm happy to kind of give you some comments on how I think that would work. Mowing. I want to note that mowing is handled under the four dune management plan, page 15, Maintenance Program. And it says down there at the end of the paragraph, mowing is not permitted in the four dune area currently. In 174260A6, it is allowed under trimming of stabilizing vegetation, mowing is. And this section was dropped from the actual ordinance, and so we need to actually reintroduce that as well as a technical change, because it was deleted, but it was, it should be in evidence in the document. Property values. Planning Commission discussed the topic, but no amendments were made regarding that And so the last thing I really want to touch on is that, and I touched a little bit on it last night, the end of the thing, at the end of a science work session, is that you can get to all of our exhibits, documents, all the public comment that will be coming in, all the audio will all be placed on our website. So if you go to our website, the front page, which is www.cianon-beach.or.us, and you click on the Current Topics tab there, it will take you to a dropdown. And on that dropdown, if you hit the four dune materials dropdown, that will then take you to a list of all of the exhibits as we update them, and we'll give you the latest update, date on that. And so that's all I wanted to say tonight, kind of frame the main topics, the main issues that came up, just as we did last night, but to give everyone an understanding of how these documents work together and form the, how we manage, currently manage, and will future management of the dunes in Cannon Beach. Do you guys have any questions?
Nope. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I guess we'll get started. Somebody in the back, was it?
My address is 3524 Northeast Clickitat Street, Portland, Oregon 97212. I am a friend of the dunes member. Our group has no financial interest in this issue. Our views are solely those of concerned community members. Though dune grading for view enhancement has been a decisive issue since its inception, our group began watchdogging the dune grading of our state-owned lands in 2014. We were soon joined by the Oregon Coast Alliance and the Surf Rider Foundation, two well-respected nonprofits who work across the nation to protect our coastline. After these five years, we know that now is the time to end dune grading for view enhancement in Cannon Beach. Though a lot of time has been spent looking at the science around dune grading, we believe the heart of this issue is one of equity. What is fair and just? What's equitable for our whole community? According to the city's short-term rental report, there are 1,812 housing units in Cannon Beach. According to Jeff Adams, there are 90 housing units within Breakers Point and the Presidential Streets beachfront homes. So these 90 homes that are currently allowed to dune grade equal little less than 5 percent of homes in Cannon Beach. Bulldozing our state-owned dunes to benefit only this 5 percent minority who have chosen to purchase real estate on an active four dune, and who want to grade solely for better ocean views from inside their homes is not fair or just. In a nutshell, there is no community benefit to dune grading. It is not equitable to those of us who enjoy the beach and its spectacular views from the beach, those of us who do not wish to see the decimated view of the dunes once grading has occurred, or to our valuable visitors that Cannon Beach's economy needs, nor to we neighbors whose houses are hit by waves of sand when grading occurs, or to everyone, every one of us, who's left more vulnerable to storms and flooding after the loss of our protective dunes. It's not equitable to the plants and animals who are living in the existing dunal ecosystem. And please don't forget the razor clams who've been repeatedly drowned at the tideline when grading occurs. It's not even fair to our neighbors at Chapman Point, who are not allowed to grade but are affected by their neighbors' grading. I implore you, and the friends of the dunes implore you, to end dune grading for view enhancement. End this constant discord in our community. End it once and for all. Just end it. End it because it's the only equitable decision that you can make on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Good time. Mike?
Mike Morgan, PO Box 132. I'd like to quote Dr. Allen's report in part, "It has become common practice to scrape or lower the dunes down to design elevation, pushing the sand over the seaward face of the four dune and out onto the beach. In these areas, an effective management strategy that addresses the intrinsic dune management goals listed previously while retaining secondary benefits such as views is important." So we applaud the Planning Commission for their work on the plan and ordinance. It's been a tremendous amount of effort, countless hours, tens of thousands of dollars expended. That said, I'd like to suggest a few tweaks to the documents. First, I think it would be helpful if all of the quantitative requirements are included in the ordinance. Currently, they seem to be spread among the three documents. So an applicant should be able to determine the spacing of dune grass planting, the time of year of grading, the depth of sand on the beach, et cetera, in the ordinance. Some other tweaks are as follows. The period in which grading and replanning takes place should be early spring to late spring, as Dr. Hacker recommended. Dune grass spacing should be wider, 18 to 2 feet rather than 1 feet, based on our experience, especially if you're using large clumps of beach grass. Sand deposit on the beach should be deeper than four inches. Our experience shows that 18 inches will wash out into the ocean in two tidal cycles. And the sand that is placed down to, should be placed down to six NGBD rather than nine feet, as recommended by the biologist from the razor clam specialist from ODF and W. No razor clams are known to exist between six and nine feet of elevation. Sands should be kept away from the buildings a distance of 35 feet, and I think Bruce will elaborate on that. A mixture of native and non-native vegetation should be encouraged for habitat protection. Chemical fertilizer should not be used because of the harm to the creek and the ocean. Experience has shown it's not necessary. Mowing of beach grass should continue to be allowed, and permits should be allowed, should be issued for more than one time only, possibly as many as five years, with strict monitoring requirements. Got a minute. In summary, because houses and condos should, in summary, perhaps houses and condos should never have been built on sand dunes or near the beach. John Yon could have donated the Chapman Point land to state parks. Downtown Cannon Beach and much of the north side should never have been built on pristine wetlands in the early 20th century. And maybe nothing should be built in the tsunami zone from now on out. But we have to deal with the reality of where we are and the history of the community. On behalf of the homeowners that live on the oceanfront, as fortunate as they are to be there.
Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't have to turn the door. Okay. Anybody else representing a group of any kind? Bruce, do you want to go?
Sure.
Okay.
I was just giving everybody else a chance.
Ready?
Bruce Francis, PO Box 246 Cannon Beach. I brought along a picture here of sand that blows from the dune to the beachhead, onto our landscape, and obstructs our access into and out of our condominiums. This is roughly 35 feet of landscape and walkways that gets covered up every year or two. And the way we handle that is to come to the city and have an administrative decision on remedial grading. So tonight, I wish to speak about remedial grading. Remedial grading is not a view enhancement issue, but it's an administrative decision that addresses impact of sand on a homeowner's property and allows them to remove the sand and place it back on the dune. Currently, the ordinance allows for removal of sand up to 35 feet from the footing, but the proposal is to limit this to 20 feet. Meg Reed is the Coastal Shore Specialist for DLCD, and I asked her how the 20-foot limit turned up. She sent me an answer in an email, part of which I will read. And you remember that Meg did testify last night. But in her email, she says, "Hannah, former planner for Crest, who was working on the update to the four dune management plan for Cannon Beach at the time, asked my advice on remedial grading about a year ago. I will admit that I didn't realize the city's code had already allowed 35 feet in their remedial grading section. I thought it was a new proposal. Our guidance suggests 15 feet. Obviously, every dune system is a little different, so 35 feet might be a good recommendation in Cannon Beach based on the dune system and where the four dune is relative to homes. A range of 10 to 30 feet is used in other coastal areas that allow remedial sand grading. Ultimately, the decision is up to the city of Cannon Beach to make based on the on-ground conditions and the background science report completed by Dagami." So that was her reply to me. So therefore, from that reply, I concluded that the 35 feet is not set in stone and could remain at 35 feet, as is presently in the code. 35 feet was established by Cannon Beach back in 1997 because the average distance between the dune and building was 35 feet of landscape and path. the dune and building was 35 feet of landscape and pathways to enter the condominiums. This distance has worked well as an administrative decision for over 20 years, and any change will tie up the Planning Commission and council in conditional use permits to remove sand that is limiting access. Please keep it at 35. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, there’s no other group people. Tom, you’re first on the list anyhow, so come on up.
Thank you. My name’s Tom Horning. I’m an engineering geologist. I do business at Horning Geosciences, 808 26th Avenue, Seaside, Oregon. I just wanted to hit on a few points that we’ve gone over and some that probably need a little further elaboration. In the 20 years that I’ve been doing doon grading with community groups here in Cannon Beach, approximately 100,000 cubic yards of sand have blown in in front of the Breakers Point condos, and about 30,000 of those cubic yards have been graded out and relocated. And as a result, in places, the dunes are 25 feet higher than they were than it was in the year 2000. That sand has been, will continue to accumulate, and we need to get on top of it. So, one of the things that we’ve discovered is that by pushing sand over on the west face of the dune, we’re covering the public’s beach, and we can’t continue to do that and still grade dunes, so we need to move the sand out into the ocean. And it’s a form of ocean nourishment, beach nourishment. We’re relocating sand that was blown out of the system and trying to put it back into the ocean. And as Mr. Morgan pointed out, we are grading it down to an elevation of 6 feet NGBD of 1929, or in other words, 10 feet NAVD. It’s basically the upper limit of the bloodworms that work through the detritus line, and it stays away from them. The sand is then, we’ve graded it out to 18 inches, and it’s easily been washed away, as Mike said, in about two days. In two weeks, you can’t tell that there was ever any grading other than a little bit of straw left over from the dead beach grass. Razor clams out at 2 feet or lower on the beach may be exposed to about a half inch of sand maximum, based on my personal observations, waiting in the water, watching it go, getting relocated. It’s 5 inches of sand that the clams have been experimentally proven to survive burial by, and if you have 10 inches of sand dumped on them, you can have 30% mortality. So our quarter inch to a half inch of sand really has no effect on razor clams. When it comes to the effects of an El Nino, which we had in 2015, we had as much as 8 feet of sand dune washed out in places where we had put maybe a foot and a half. If you compare the volumes of sand that were moved by an El Nino to the amount of sand that we move in a grading operation, El Ninos have 50 to 100 times more sand impact than anything that we do. So the impact that we are responsible for occasionally is nothing compared to what nature does anyhow. With regard to tsunami barriers that the dunes provide, it’s not very significant. Most tsunamis, when they come in, rise, the ocean rises and the water sweeps around the ends of the dune, so if you’re hoping to—
Thanks, Tom.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can, when the testimony is completed, can we ask questions or can we ask people to come back and continue to testify?
Bill, that’s okay.
Sure, that’s fine. You want to make sure people have the agreement, provide their testimony, but if you have questions, there’s no reason we can’t extend it.
Okay.
So we can ask questions as they testify or when everybody else is done and we start asking?
Whichever you choose.
Save your question. I think that would be better.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, the next name I have on my list is Libby Gast.
I think I’ll wait.
Okay, Libby, oh wait. Linda Avindia Lipman? Do you wish to speak? Okay.
Lydia Lipman, 252 Stamper Road, Lake Oswego. Mr. Mayor, councilors, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this issue. I feel it’s important to remind ourselves about the qualities that make Cannon Beach the magical town that it is and that we all care so much about and where I’ve lived part of my life for the last 30 years. Obviously, it’s the majesty of the setting, the wide stretches of white sand, easy access to the beaches, and the truly iconic beaches. Today, walking along Ocean Avenue, I bumped into a young couple visiting from Germany, and he just opened his arms and he said, “Look at this. Nowhere in the world does it look like this.” But it’s also the warm, welcoming community, where the people are here for 365 days, 3 months, or 3 days of the year, the sense of peace and security and the public pride in its city. But today, just like the issues facing the world’s climate, I feel that we are at an inflection point, that the beauty of our environment and the values of our city are being questioned and tested. We’re starting to see the beginnings of an ecological disaster north of Ecola Creek. The broad, beautiful beach is rapidly diminishing as the uncontrolled growth of the dunes encroach more and more onto the beach. Oregon’s promise of public access to the beach is also in question. At the 5th Street Public Beach Access, one must first walk 300 yards over soft sand through a huge tunnel of dunes, then battle down and later up a 52-foot sand cliff to reach the beach. Neither young families with all their paraphernalia or older people can possibly access that beach any longer. And where once one could stand at the bottom at the end of the road of 5th Avenue and view the vast expanse of sea, sky, sand, and rocks to the north and the south, or watch the setting sun from a gentle slope, today the vista is no more. It’s just a wall of sand. So here we are at the inflection point. Is the degradation taking place north of Ecola Park an early warning of what the city’s entire seaside will become on the assumption that your decision will affect equality equally and without discrimination on all its beachfronts and all its citizens? Can Cannon Beach afford to lose the three foundations of its success and well-being, its beaches, its access, and its views? I implore you to let logic and common sense dictate your decisions. Number one, follow the scientific recommendations outlined in the Allen Report and implement a responsible sand management plan. You’ve spent huge amounts of time and thousands of dollars to get the scientific information. Secondly, plant the correct dune grass. And three, restore love, dignity, compassion, and common sense to this community and put this divisive episode behind us forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the list is Kathy Filgus.
Hello, my name is Kathy Filgus. My address is 6550 Southwest 63rd Ave. in Portland, Oregon, and we live half the time in Cannon Beach. Let me begin by saying I am a conservationist. My partner and I have a foundation, the Treen Filgus Foundation, to protect birds and their habitats. We fund organizations and projects locally, nationally, and internationally to save birds and where they live. We also, although I don’t like to talk about it much publicly, but I’m making an exception here, we bought through the 342 acres of warehouser property just north of Cannon Beach, adjacent to Ecola State Park. So if you stand in the middle of Cannon Beach and look north, you’re looking at the former warehouser parcel. And we bought it in 2016 to save it from clearcutting and to restore it to a true functioning forest. So I wear the badge of conservationist proudly. Given that, I’m very baffled at this dune conversation. As a conservationist, the first thing you do is remove non-native species from habitats to restore them. And the European beach grass that is all over our dunes is decidedly non-native and invasive. Our dunes are simply a human-engineered landscape, not a natural dune state. There is no biodiversity because the European beach grass chokes all natives out. There is no bird habitat because no birds will nest in non-native grasses. So the idea that we want to keep the dunes for scenic beauty is really a bunch of malarkey. There’s absolutely nothing natural about them, which brings me to my second point. People do not come to Cannon Beach to see dunes. They come to see our amazing beach, Haystack Rock, Tilly. And if you are blessed with physical, the physical abilities and time to walk along the beach, the sights are breathtaking. But if you have a walker, stroller, wheelchairs, uncertain senior legs, you name it, you enjoy these sights from Ocean Avenue. Hundreds and hundreds of locals and visitors use this street every day. I know this because I live at Ocean and Jackson. We’re the ones with the grassy mound in front of our house. And as I garden out front, I get to enjoy the happiness these views elicit from these passersby, and I mean hundreds of people. Just last week, in a 15-minute period, I counted, which was very normal, 35 folks walking by plus four cars pulling up the snap pics. At sunset, we can have as many as 40 delighted folks out on that mound. So please, don’t take away their opportunity to see that. So back to the conservation thing, these dunes are denigrated due to the non-native European beach grass. So it doesn’t matter if you do dune removal. The dunes are not in their natural state anyway. They’ll come back if you replant that dang European beach grass. But most importantly, with the dunes low, thousands of visitors and locals can enjoy the visual gifts Cannon Beach has to offer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect. Oh boy. Shueb?
My name is Shueb Treen. My address is 6550 Southwest 63rd Ave., Portland, Oregon, and I live half the time in Cannon Beach with Kathy, my wife. Our foundation, the Treen Filgus Foundation’s mission is to protect birds and their habitat. I would like to talk about one program that’s relevant to the matter at hand. There are less than 500 snowy plovers in Oregon, and the bird is listed as an endangered species bird. After being absent for many years, a pair of snowy plovers attempted to nest at Nahalem Spit in 2016. We learned that the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department did not have the personnel to adequately monitor the nesting plovers on the north coast. To help out, we met with the folks at Portland Autobahn and funded a plover patrol project for the north coast. It’s been in place for two years now. In this program, the local volunteers are trained by Autobahn personnel, monitor and report the plover nesting sites during the breeding season. Although there’s better monitoring, the plover numbers are still low because of the habitat is poor. The two biggest obstacles to plover habitat are tall dunes and European beach grass. To improve the conditions, we are now working with Oregon Parks to fund the dune restoration program in Nahalem Bay State Park and Sitka Sedge State Natural Area. At Cannon Beach, we should reduce the height of the dunes and use native dune plant communities to stabilize the dune. This may not be the quickest solution, but it’s the right thing to do. The invasive European beach grass is an ecological disaster, unsuitable for all native wild lives, whether flora or fauna. Every restoration project these days involves removing exotic plant materials at significant cost. Just the two projects I mentioned, $37,000 of funds will go to, just to kill European beach grass using herbicides. Whether it’s Scotch broom in our forests, purple loosestrife in our wetlands, or European beach grass on our beaches, this is a very expensive problem. I would urge the city to disallow the planting of this invasive aggressive plant on our dunes and consider a more enlightened approach to dune stabilization. And if we build it, the plovers may come. Thank you.
Thank you. Hang on, got a minute. Next is Mike Thayer. Come on.
There we are. Hello, everyone. It’s great to see everybody. I want to say that I feel that the city planning department—
Mike, sorry. Name an address first.
All right, don’t turn that over yet. Let me get through that.
I was waiting.
Okay, my name is Mike Thayer. I live at 487 Ocean Avenue, part of the time here in Cannon Beach. I’ve had our home here in Cannon Beach for 23 years. I want to say that I feel that the city planning department, mayor and city council have done, and all the people that have had input to the process, because I know it’s been going on for a couple of years now with the moratorium, I want to just think, say to you that I think you’ve done a really good job in looking at this from a standpoint of equality and just looking at all the different aspects that you need to meet with the state mandates and so forth to get this done. The goals and objectives the city has balanced in developing this plan is obvious. It addresses the state of Oregon guidance for dune management, comprehensive planning for the city of Cannon Beach. Most important, it addresses these issues from, I think, a real balanced approach. I want to say that one of the big things I’ve heard tonight, you know, one thing that, my mom and dad came down and lived at the place quite a bit, and they both got to a point where they couldn’t go down on the beach anymore. And so when we, 20 years ago, started working with the city to come up with the comprehensive plan with the science and how things would work back then, it was really cool when we were able to adjust the dunes, replant them, and create an area that people walking on the road there could see the ocean and the beach. And there are so many people that walk along there with their dogs, older people, people that are disabled, that can’t go on the beach anymore. And these vistas mean a lot to our family and, I think, just in general, to the general public of the beach. When we first moved into our house 23 years ago, there was a 12-foot dune in front of our house about 4 feet from the fence line. And that’s, I would, I could only imagine if we never got on to grading and doing the things that we’ve done to benefit everyone, I cannot imagine what it would be like in front of Jefferson and Ocean Avenue in the central district of the planning that you’ve done. I just can’t even imagine it. So, the sand comes and goes, it moves, it’s a very, you know, just a lot going on and a lot of things that have to be handled, but it has to be handled in the middle. Two years ago, when the moratorium came in place and there was a lot of divisiveness and people were like doing lawsuits and stuff, I came and I said, “Look, let’s all get together and work on this. Let’s build on the things that past folks that have worked so hard and put so many hours into. Let’s take that with the new science, with the State 18 measure, with the comprehensive plan. You got your hands full, but I think you’ve done a really good job in presenting it with what the goals are and what are, you know, what you’re trying to accomplish. If you look at those things, they’re very balanced in my perspective. I do own an oceanfront home, but I think the benefits of what we’ve done have helped everybody in the community.”
Thanks, Mike.
Very much. Thank you, everyone, for what you do. It’s not easy work. Keep it up, the good work, okay? Thank you.
When you see that last little bit in there, that last tablespoon, it goes pretty fast. Just so you know. Next is Bill Ellis. Bill? Okay, I’ll save you for next time. Jeff Harrison? Stop.
Going to be right at 3 minutes. Somebody will watch when you turn that thing.
Okay, I’m ready.
My name is Jeff Harrison. Tonight, I represent myself and my wife Jennifer Harrison. Our mailing address is P.O. Box 742, Cannon Beach, 97110. We spend a quarter of our time here and have a home on North Laurel. We’re both members of the group Friends of the Dunes, and I vote in Platteville County. My wife’s 87-year-old mother accessed the 5th Street Beach Access daily this summer with no issues at all. We have followed this issue for five years. We applaud you for undertaking this initiative to refresh the science and understanding of our literal cell and to consider discontinuing bulldozing our dunes for view. I say— I say "our dunes" because our dunes are on state-owned lands. They do belong to all of us, and they do significantly add to the natural rustic windswept beach views enjoyed by all citizens and visitors alike. The beaches and dunes are not a private landscape for front row homeowners whose homes account for less than 5%. As we heard last night, goal 18 does not guarantee the right to a view. We ourselves have had cherished peekaboo views of the ocean and top of the rock, but trees have grown to obstruct and our views are gone. Do we have the right to cut those trees? Of course not. Views are not a property right issue. During the first four years of our involvement, we looked for compromise with grading proponents. Sadly, there was never been, there's never been a hint of compromise. Instead, we've seen a constant push for more grading, more sand, and more often. We now know, we now realize, they will never be satisfied. At their first hearing, some of your planning commissioners considered a vote to recommend ending grading. Some of them seemed tempted but expressed the need to first make changes to the dugami encrest documents in case council did not end a vote to end grading. The documents tweaked by staff were front-loaded and biased towards grading. One example manifested in the objectives. There was no public input regarding objectives, and grading was added as a fourth. The first three made sense and were science-based. Keep the dunes substantial to withstand erosion and overtopping, maintain weak points to prevent breaches, maintain the ecosystem. But Dr. Allen somehow added a fourth objective, which was not science-related, retain views of the ocean. We asked ourselves, why is a scientist making recommendations pertaining to policy and aesthetics? We hope you considered or wondered that too. Most of us don't want unnatural-looking bulldozed dunes that continuously look like hair transplants and result in accentuated views of developments from the beach. It took the planning commission over a year to make significant changes to the documents. At their last hearing, they voted to carefully consider ending, ending this practice, and they did so unanimously. Ending grading has been problematic and contentious since inception. With history, we know the proponents will never be satisfied, and continued grading will condemn our beaches and dunes to a perpetual state of ugliness. We all know how long it takes for an area to recover. It takes years, not months, and they want to grade every year. Please end the practice of grading for views in Cannon Beach. Thank you very much for your continued service to this tedious, contentious, but important issue.
Well done. Teaspoon left. Peter Musser? Make sure you get all your sand in there.
My name is Peter Musser. Reside at 145 39th Avenue East in Seattle. And we have two homes here in Cannon Beach, one of which is on Ocean Avenue. And I'd just like to point out, a couple of speakers mentioned that only 5% of the homes are in question here as if it's an elitist thing. And some other speakers have said, "Well, you have to look at all the people that walk along Ocean Avenue." So I think it's a little disingenuous to come up with this number, and, and it has to do with just doing this as for the views of these private property owners. If you added up all the people that walked along Ocean Avenue like we did for 30 years and still do today, it probably would equal a number far times greater than the residents at Cannon Beach. So just to keep it in perspective, this isn't some kind of elitist thing going on. It's very practical, and it also affects a large number of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, now we have to take a break.
Pull the back over, or go in the other way.
Colleen, there's a problem. No, actually, I think it's halfway, so.
Use your phone or...
Bruce, you're on.
All right, thank you. I guess I'm the commercial. The council had asked if staff could put together some tours of City Hall. I think that anybody that is willing to sit through the controversy associated with four dunes is really going to love it when we get to City Hall. But what we'd like to do is do some tours to anybody that's interested tonight, have, just kind of go around and look at some of the things. And it's, some of it's pretty interesting stuff. For example, the folks sitting along this side here, there's a little X over by this wall, there's, the, the roof of the building is actually holding up that wall. So there's things like that that we want to, you know, go around and say, "These are the conditions that we have now in City Hall." So we are going to do it at the end of the, and I see everybody moving over. Yeah, you're going to be crowded out on this side. So what I'd like to know is how many people might be willing to stay after, because I need to know how many people to capture from staff to kind of walk people through. I think it'll be 10 minutes at the most.
You might, you might explain why it's important that they tour City Hall?
Because of committee?
Yeah, because we are looking, we are looking for a bond measure possibly?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Yes, yes, we will be talking about it. But this will be the first time we'll actually have, you know, public going through the building and starting the conversation about some of the reasons that we really, that some of us feel we need a new building, and a lot of it has, does not have to do with the condition of the building, believe it or not. So that's what we wanted to talk about. There's also, we've done a lot of research to try to be able to have information to start this discussion, and council thinks that it's important that somebody independent takes a look at it to say, "Yes, your information makes sense. It was right, people that said the things. You made the right conclusions as far as the pros and cons of each site," before we start talking to the public about it and, and, you know, what some of the conversations have occurred. So they're, they are looking, it's tentatively called a vetting committee because it's specifically to vet the information that council has had and staff has had to make our decision. So we're hoping that the inspiring tour that is potentially coming up here and the interest in the subject might result in additional people possibly saying, "I really want to be on that vetting committee." So that's, that's another part of it. But down the road, we are looking at, if we are going to do a project, it will have to be funded, and that will be funded through what's called a referral, which means everybody that votes can vote to say yea or nay on the, on the bond proposal. So can I get a show of hands how many people, because I know I've made it sound great, but how many people might want to go on that tour? Okay, that's fine, okay, I can handle that. All right, very, very good. If you just kind of stay after, say maybe a minute or two in here, and then we'll kind of go around, look at all the things, and I'll show you how that wall's being held up. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Bruce. And we'll do this at some of the other hearings also for the dune management. Okay, next person is Tom Williamson. Tom? Nope. Okay. Wait, oh, there you are. Tom Williamson. Sorry.
I didn't know I was on the list.
Yep.
My name is Tom Williamson.
Okay.
And I live in Camp Sherman, but we have a house at 216 South Laurel that my grandfather bought in 1944. So I've been coming down here for 70-some-odd years, and somebody suggested to me that we've also been paying property taxes in Clatsop County for 70-some-odd years. We live at the north end of the problem that Ocean Avenue faces. We don't have sand in front of our house except a steep slope, but years past, we've had sand going over our fence into our yard. We have a four-foot fence in front of the house, and we've had to hire a contractor to come in and move the sand, and we had to shovel the sand inside the yard over the fence. So our problem is not necessarily view, but it's sand in, in, I can't say that word, coming into our yard. So we very much need to have the opportunity, as necessary, to move sand that likes to come into our yard. So that's all I have to say, and thank you for letting me speak.
Sure, thanks, Tom. I've got another little break. This is a great idea, though, so.
Or an iPhone?
Well, I've been...
He uses his iPad.
You know, we just, we just...
I can't use that, I suppose.
We were going to do something electronic, and then we saw one that had sand in it.
I have been...
It was like, yes.
But the speaker's...
Yeah, you can't see this, so this, this...
Yeah.
Okay, actually, the next person is going to be Gary...
I'm Comey.
Comey?
I'll reserve my comment.
Okay, reserve. Tim Ramey? Did I get that right?
You did. My name's Tim Ramey.
Hang on, just a second.
Well, I'll just tell you a little bit about myself.
You got a joke?
My name's Tim Ramey. I'm a resident of Cannon Beach and live at 628 Oak Street.
Okay, perfect. One, two, three, go.
So I was really struck by the meeting last night. I thought it was awesome. I thought there was good presentation of science. We listened to the science. None of the science really gave us a whole lot of pause in terms of maybe moving forward with this plan. And I also was very impressed that there were 50 or 60 or 80, I don't know the number, people in the room. This is a community that, that comes out and cares, I think deeply, about this issue and cares deeply about the town. So I was going to try and keep on a positive tone and, and look at a community-building sort of exercise and say, "Gee, we've got good science on our side. People care. The people who want to move sand are prepared to pay for that process." And then that, that first presentation just sort of punched me in the, in the gut a little bit because it was truly an us-or-them kind of thing. And I just don't see that in Cannon Beach. I think that's not who we are. People care passionately about this issue. Views are important, and I think giving groups or, or communities the right to do what they need to do and do with their own dime is incredibly important. And we've already learned that there's no science to contravail it. Thanks a lot. Now you got a, now you got a sand problem.
And actually, I need to take a little break. So we're going to take a five-minute break, let this thing rest. We've just started a new page, so we're about halfway done, unless there's been any new folks coming in, and I'll check that. So five minutes. Go. Okay, we're going to start right off with Jan Seibert-Warman.
Jan Seibert-Warman, PO Box 778, Cannon Beach. Dear Mayor and City Councilors, today our world is in the midst of a climate crisis. It is of the utmost importance for each individual, each community, county, state, and country to take a fresh look at how we are living on our planet. In everything we do, we are being asked for the sake of the greater good for all people, all creatures, to live as simply and humbly as we possibly can. We can choose to use only what we really need. Our beaches here were once places of joyful recreation and inspiration. In the past 20 years, however, they've too often become a war against the sand zone, filled with heavy machines noisy excavating our public beaches, our dunes. We have an opportunity now to take a fresh look at this dune grading for views practice to see if it really is worth all the trouble it brings with it. Children are now growing up here thinking huge machines digging up our beaches are normal. As a parent, as a person who remembers a time here when dune grading for views was not allowed, I ask each of you if the majority of visitors and residents alike weren't better off before we began allowing dune grading for views. Most communities along the Oregon coast do not allow dune grading for views. I ask each of us to look at the science presented last evening if repetitive dune grading for views is really worth repeating over and over again for our community. Let's try the next 20 years with no dune grading for views. We need our dunes for protection against flooding and erosion. With the climate crisis, we're all being asked to make changes and sacrifices for the enduring health of our planet. Let's come together and try living with a lighter footprint on our local beaches.
Thanks, Jan.
Thank you.
Keep wanting to turn that over. Okay, Ashley Dunn?
Pass.
Pass? Dick Rapp?
Pass.
Robbie Dodd?
Hi, my name's Robbie Dodd, PO Box 427 in Cannon Beach. My wife and I moved to the Northwest in 2009. We were introduced to Cannon Beach by local residents that live on Larch Street, fell in love with it. About a year ago, we bought a home, we renovated, and as of the summer, we're full-time residents of Cannon Beach. You know, when the oceanfront developments were built, at the time, the science and the state said, "We've got to shore up the dunes. We need to plant the European beech grass," which was the science at the time, and it worked. Dr. Hacker has said that it did its job, it built it up. In the Allen Report, it said it built it up. But at the end of the day, it's still a man-made structure. It must be maintained. We build roads and we maintain them. We, you know, we have other infrastructure in the city and we maintain it. Now, it looks natural because that's how it's designed, and that's what happens when you're responsible in, in grading. I agree with, with everyone else, and it looks ugly if you wipe it down and make it flat, but we know through the Allen Report, we know that too, if we can contour it, if we can have the natural valleys and hills, it can still be a beautiful, beautiful sight here on our beaches. I've read through the four dune management plan, and I know you guys have spent a lot of time and effort going through that. I know I'm new to the, the city, and so I don't have all of the history and background knowledge, but thank you for that time. And I know this is a difficult, a difficult process, and I'm generally supportive of it. The, the goals are in line, and I guess I would add just three things is it's important that we protect and enhance the wildlife. It's been, we've talked about it a number of times, the European beech grass, while it piles up sand, it's not the best for our environment, and there's been discussions of, of going all the way to using the American beech grass, and I know in the plan, it's, it's working on a mixture of the both, and so I understand that that's a, a fair compromise. On the clam beds, I think it's, it's also important to consider the clams. And, and to, to be able to map out where the clams are, I also read on the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife that 95% of all the radiser clams in Oregon are in the 18-mile beach north of Tillamook Head, and that's why there's never seasonality on the beach at, at Cannon Beach or Chapman Port, Chapman Beach. And in the last year that I've been here, and although I'm not out there every day, I've met or seen eight people searching for kale clams, and I haven't met someone yet that has found them. There were three I saw out this morning. Not to discard that, and I think it's important, but I think having that information and making sure that we at least know where they are so that we can balance that. There were also comments in the grass with the...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't want to do that. Jeff Lang?
My name is Jeff Lang. I'm at 7240 Southwest Fulton Park Boulevard in Portland. My wife and I have owned a condominium at Breakers Point for... My wife and I have owned a condominium at Breakers Point for 17, 18 years. I've followed this debate over the years. We're greatly troubled by it. We see both sides of it. Both my wife and I are ardent environmentalists. So tonight, I'm not here to quote the regulations or the ordinance, I just want to speak to two points. One is I have, for 14 years, been on the board of Tryon Creek State Park in Portland, borders between Portland and Lake Oswego. In addition to building an environmental camp for kids in the summer and running a nature center, our biggest challenge has been fighting European ivy in our forest. We have about 800 acres in Tryon Creek now. We started with about 70, 25 years ago. We have a massive program. We use boy scouts, we use prisoners, we use volunteers through the old Vista program to try to eradicate what's a horrible invasive species. And I can just share with you what I've learned. We've accomplished, over the last 12 years, 200, 250 acres have been cleared of European ivy that grows in the forest and on the trees. You can walk through that part of our forest that we protect, and you can, it's just plain as day. There's more piliated woodpeckers, there's more, even frogs in the, in the little ponds and in the creeks. It's a way of bringing back habitat, as other folks tonight have talked about. That's my first point. My second one is, I don't like to talk about this in public, but I have a neurological disease, and I have, wear braces, as you probably noticed, and, but I'm also an ardent backpacker. I still try to keep fighting the odds on this disease. And over the years, everybody knows, because they see me walking up and down the beach, and the access is an issue. It's been brought up before. I applaud the city because historically, there's been some attempts for the city to cater to and help disabled folks, like the wheelchairs with the big wheels that were put in the number of years ago. But we need, we need a lot more so the beach can truly be open to the community. And I think we also have to get, get real about it. You want people that are disabled to have the fight that I do and continue the fight and not be looked at as disabled. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Pharoah Anderson?
I'll go to pass.
Thank you. Frank Patrick?
I'll wait.
Nancy Anna Ferber?
I'll pass.
Randy Neal?
I'll pass.
Mary Mims? We have a taker.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Mary Mims. I live at 4205 Northwest Carlton Court, Portland. While I've never lived in Cannon Beach, we have many friends here, and I have been coming to Cannon Beach since I was 10 years old with my family, my cousins and aunts and uncles. This is a very emotional topic for me, and I'll get to that. The beautiful dunes that we have enjoyed have changed. They have become not gentle mounds, but obstacles to both young and old. There is no easy way to access the beaches other than stairs downtown or south at Tullavanna, where apparently the sand accumulation is managed by the city parks. To the north, which is where my family and I always went, the access has become impossible, even for me right now. And it's been that way for years. The ramp up on Fifth Street was once easy. It is not. Now you can tumble down, if you're lucky. It's impossible climbing back up. Apparently, this is the result of sand accumulation we learned last night from Dr. Hacker, from having the improper grass planted. The native dune grass does not create very tall, steep dunes, which now appear to emerge in a series of them that take over the area. So I'm going to cut all this short because I don't want my minutes... Oh, I'm doing pretty good, right? To me, just a visitor, I thought my access to enjoy the beaches was guaranteed with the beach bill that preserved the access to all Oregonians, not just those who own property adjacent to the beach. To me, the dunes should be managed to make the beach accessible and passable to the visitors. The city has prevented the very access that the state assured all Oregonians of having. The goal of the beach bill was not just to preserve the access to look as you drive down 101. It was to let those who are not fortunate to own their own property here to visit what is clearly one of the most picturesque parts of Oregon. To me, it's a personal thing. It's not about owning property, it's about access to the beach. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a name here that's Luanne Barrett, but crossed out.
Pass.
Pardon?
No, pass.
Pass, okay. That's what I figured, I just wanted to make sure. Next up will be Mike Manzouli.
Mike Manzouli, PO Box 650, Tullavanna. Thanks for all the work you guys are doing on this. That meeting last night was pretty awesome. Like thousands of folks before me, I came to Cannon Beach for its wild public beaches. I bring my three-year-old and all of his three-year-old friends and all of our gear, no problem, down to the beach, the north end by Chapman Point, all summer long. We play in its dynamic dune system. It may not be in its natural state. It has invasive grasses. It has condominiums. But we get lost in its grandeur, no longer seeing the development behind us. All there are are waves, the birds, and one hell of a beach. We never, never go to the beach at the president's. Been here 20 years, it's not a place I go to. Why? It's cultivated, industrial almost, dare I say it? It's ugly. Each grading has the feel and aesthetic of a mini clearcut, and we'd rather be in a forest. There are thousands of us, thousands of us, visitors, locals, all up Clatsop County, not just people who live in Cannon Beach, that feel this way. All the local families I know, and I'm, you know, part of this community, we all go to Chapman Point, we all go to the dunes, we all hang out there. It's time for Cannon Beach's short history of dune grading for views to come to an end. One person's obstacle is another's view. In the time of climate uncertainty, our dunes are Cannon Beach's greatest protection against increased wave activity, erosion, and king tides. Let's protect our community. While we're at it, protect our razor clams. There's a healthy population at Chapman Point. It's not as big or widely known, but there is one there. And let's keep our dunes wild. Please vote no more dune grading for views, and thank you.
Slight interlude here.
When we got that, we just had no idea that people would speak for less than three minutes. We never thought that would be the problem.
It never has in the past.
Based on past experience, it was not going to happen.
Janet Patrick, 255 Northwest Torrevuee Drive, I'm sorry. This is a difficult thing to do. Portland, Oregon. My name is Janet Patrick, and I have owned a home in Cannon Beach for the past 24 years. I can't begin to tell you how special this town has been to my family and I. Walking on the beach, listening to the sound of the waves, has renewed our family relationships. So when I had an opportunity, I became a member of, applied to become a member of the Planning Commission. And at the time the dune issue came up, I was asked to recuse myself. So at that time, Fran Carey and I invited the entire Planning Commission to come down and make a site visit at Breakers Point and to go into some of the condominiums and see what has resulted from the buildup of the dunes and how dark and depressing the interior of some of the units are. To my knowledge, when I presented this to the Planning Commission, I did not hear back from one commissioner that they would be willing to come. I do know that Bob Lundey came out and walked the dunes, and I truly appreciate it. I mean, my heart was broken that somebody didn't care enough to respond to my email or to come down and actually visibly see the situation. And I appreciate the fact, hearing last night, that you people are coming down. And I hope that when you come down, you will also take the time to try to go down on the beach and come back up in a couple of different locations. I think that I'm a pretty active person, but I have crawled up those dunes at times in order to attend hamfires with my grandkids. And that's what I got a place here at Cannon Beach for, was for family and to spend time with them. So if they're down there having a bonfire in Samores, I want to be down there too. But getting back up has become a real challenge. And, let's see, anyway, I would like to invite anybody in the community that would like to come down and go up and down our dunes, to feel welcome to do so. Bring your chairs and your sand buckets and all of the campfire equipment that you carry, and park in one of our unnumbered spots and check it out because that is the challenge for all of us in order to enjoy the beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I too made it three minutes.
Got to be a new goal, everybody try to get under three minutes. We've actually been through the list, so Libby, do you want to go?
Libby Gass, 670 Oak Street. I live about, probably about 40% of the time here in Cannon Beach now, and I don't have anything prepared, so bear with me. We purchased a home here almost five years ago, and we love this community. It's a community that I grew up coming to as a kid, and I'm going to get emotional This community is one that has embraced us, has been very inclusive, and I think is one that does not need to be so divisive. That is not how I perceive this community at all. I don't think it is a grading for dune or for views issue or a terminating dune issues. I think there is a very strong compromise that can be met, and I hope that that's something that you guys can come to a conclusion, to try and embrace all the opinions and find a compromise. Obviously, the terrain in the city has changed. I know homeowners that are pleading for sand and homeowners that are saying, please take it away. And I think that this dune grass that is holding on for dear life and the winds that we learned and all the oceanography and all the lessons that we learned last night, and which I learned a lot, I don't know exactly how we manage it, but in order to have this coast be one that we can all enjoy and remain a strong community, we, I, is our dune, yes, I am oceanfront, and I do enjoy a gorgeous view, but I also appreciate a dune to a certain extent as far as protection. People that are losing dunes, I fear for them that they don't have protection. And so I see it as this ebb and flow. Do I want to lose my view? No, I'm not going to lie. As a homeowner, I don't want to lose my view, but I also don't want to see it desecrated and not have a viable dune grass that is promoting nature, promoting a dune to a certain extent without being invasive. And that's all that I, you know, I would like to see. I appreciate all the time and energy that you guys are putting into this. I know it's not easy. And I appreciate everyone coming out, but I think that, that there is a strong compromise here, and that doesn't need to be one extreme or another, but there's obviously issues that people are having with protecting or not protecting homes. And if I read the studies correctly...
Time's up.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, I did not expect that.
Okay, I'm going back through the list. Bill Ellis, do you want to speak? Gary Giacomo? Gary?
I'm a Kleenex, I'm sorry.
Ashley Dunn?
No, pass.
No? Dick Rapp?
Pass.
Thank you. Pharoah Anderson?
I'll go to pass, thank you.
My name is Frank Patrick, and I live at 255 Northwest Torrevuee in Portland, Oregon, with my wife Janet. We have owned a home down here together for the last 15 years and at Breakers Point. I have been very heavily involved in understanding the sand situation, and I've been distressed tonight and distressed in nights before about the characterization of me and my wife buying and wanting just views for ourselves. And I think that we've lost the goal of what Goal 18 and what the Oregon Open Beaches Act really has to say about that. The beach is for everybody. And I find it difficult to understand how the folks that own property on presidential streets or any of the adjacent parcels can be accused of wanting something for themselves because they want to see the dunes down. The long and the short of it is, we look at the dunes from a different perspective, and we really do, and we know that. We look at the, really, the ugly part of those dunes. I mean, they look horrible. Go out there and look at them from the beachside, and it's all because of the dune grass, and Dr. Hacker did a good job of explaining that last night. If the grading takes place, you're not going to stop the accumulation of sand. We know that. But the other side of that is real clear. If you don't do something about the grading, you're going to lose the rest of the beach that's in front of that dune, the toe. As she testified and Dr. Allen's report also substantiates, the dune is accumulating and moving toward the water. If that happens, you have a narrower beach. This last year, we had some horrible accretions, but we had some horrible storms, and we ended up having a drop, a sharp drop, off of the end of the Fifth Street, and it went at some point from six to 16 feet. And I don't care who or how athletic you are, you don't jump down that, and you don't climb back up it. It prevents you from getting there. In fact, we were concerned, and the city apparently was concerned as well, they asked us at Breakers Point if we would make sure that they could have a clear shot down to the beach. They graded it a couple of times, and then they stopped. I don't know why, but they couldn't get their fire truck and their emergency equipment down there. Nobody's talking about the safety issue. There's a safety issue that's here as well. One of the big safety issues are, is you can't see what's going on in the dunes. There have been tales of people being surprised... There have been tales of people being surprised by people sleeping in the dunes, having tents in the dunes, and I know that there had been more than one occasion where the police had been called to ask and remove people. The goal, remember, it's not just about the site for, for us. It's also the site for everybody.
Thank you.
The views. Thank you.
Nancy Ferber? No? And Randy Neal? Nope. That means we've done our list. And so, council, if you have any questions of any of the folks that have spoken, now would be a good time.
Tom, I have a couple of questions for you. Could you talk a little bit more about the clam protection and the sand being taken down to the beach?
Okay, there's, the razor clams generally live at an elevation of two feet and lower. So if you're, if you use the National Geodetic Vertical Datum of nineteen twenty-nine, that would be at two feet below sea level. The modern datum that we use is the North American Datum of nineteen eighty-eight, and that coincides very closely with mean lower low water. So the clams are at approximately plus two feet on down. So if you had, if you ever went out clam digging, you probably won't dig a clam very well if it's a two-foot tide or higher. The, the sand that they live in moves around in shoals that can be between three and four feet high in places, and they can change as much as that amount in twenty-four hours. The clams are adapted to it. They rise and fall, digging and ascending, responding so that they can get their siphons up into the water. To test the impact of what would happen if they took dredgetailings, sand dredgetailings from the Columbia River, Oregon Department of Wildlife, took adult clams, put them in a large cylinder of sand, and then dumped more sand on top of them, and they found out that if there were ten inches of sand, that about, and you did it twice, you'd, you'd kill thirty percent of the clams. But if it was about five inches of sand, they would all survive, provided you didn't, didn't do it to them too many times. Comparing that to what, what the dune grading does by pushing sand down to the ten-foot NAVD line, the boundary between no, no significant marine life and then significant marine life, we've been able to show that the sand that gets washed out, streams out with wave after wave, and it doesn't build up piles of sand suddenly like the experiments. So the, so we can draw the conclusion that sand from dune grading is, is rhythmically sequentially taken out by waves over a two-hour period at high tide and spread out through the surf. And by standing out there and letting the sand wash around, it can either be buried or washed free, or usually what we find is about a half inch of sand seems to accumulate around our feet. And it's, it's not an analytical, reproducible thing. It's a rather subjective. But I think it's pretty telling as an experienced clam digger that the amount of sand that gets spread out over the clam beds is so small that it's far less than the five inches that the clams already survive in experiments. So it's pretty easy to conclude that with a half inch of sand that accumulates over those clam beds, the clams are unaffected.
I asked the question last night about sand washing into the ocean, and I was, I thought I was told, and I might have misunderstood, that it doesn't do, any sand that you grade out doesn't go wash into the ocean. So...
I heard that too, that Dr.
I think it was Dr. Hacker.
Hacker, yeah. I think she was wrong.
Okay.
I, I think she was opinionating. The, the sand, we don't really know where all the sand goes once it goes into the surf, but we do know that bars shift about all over the place. We also know that when we have a significant El Nino, sand is stripped off the beaches. The beaches drop in elevation significantly, and the sand moves north into Ecola Park, and it kills the, the sea life with shoals of sand covering the barnacles and, and the mussels and suffocating them. And then it, it stays that way for several months, and then the sand washes away. A horrid smelly mess comes washing out, and the rocks suddenly are barren. They don't have barnacles or anything on them. That sand then goes back to where it came from, which is presumably south of Chapman Point and other points further south. And the general theory of it all is that you have about, oh, about seventy percent of the sand moves north and thirty percent of the sand moves south, and tends to favor accumulating up near Chapman Point and leaving areas like Arch Cape and points farther south. But they do, we do know that beaches form in those areas to the south, and so there's sand offshore coming onshore, and it presumably is heading north and returning south. But the actual balance is not something we can easily quantify. We can generalize that it does move around. So using that generalized explanation, sand that we push down to the edge of the surf and then gets pulled out by the monthly high tide and storm waves, gets out there and mixes up with all the rest of the sand. And presumably, thirty percent of it or so is going to head south. And the whole idea is that in the sand budget of the, of the beach system between Tillamook Head and Cape Falcon, it would be really nice to make sure that we didn't blow all the sand up into the dunes and shrink our beaches away to nothing, because that, number one, takes away beaches for enjoyment, but it also enhances erosion at the south end of the littoral cell, where the beaches get very narrow and very low. So mush, pushing that sand back into the ocean would be a real desirable goal and accomplishment every time grading takes place, rather than just packing it on the west face of the, of the Fordune, which just covers the public's upper beach, takes away recreational opportunities and viewscape, and it also stores sand out of the system. As near as I can tell, the sand comes and goes on larger scales as well. And Dr. Allen mentions things about the PDO and Pacific Decade Oscillation and El Ninos. But until we get some numbers to really pin it down, I've got a feeling that the sand packs up in the north end of the littoral cell until we have an earthquake, and the land drops and co-seismic subsidence of five feet causes the ocean to wash away the dunes, and it pulls it all out and redistributes it. And I know I periodically bring up earthquakes and tsunamis all the time, but this is a real thing, and I think it's a very strong suspicion that this is what's going on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Tom. Anybody, any other council questions? No? Steph, do you have any follow-up or any statements?
So if anybody wants to have another shot at speaking, we're meeting again nine o'clock on Saturday morning, and again at six o'clock on Saturday evening. That's for the true diehard people. And then on Monday at five thirty.
Tuesday? And we are adjourned.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Start Tuesday. Don't come Monday. All right. And then the people that have an interest in seeing our city hall, just kind of sit for a minute and we'll round you up. Thank you.
I'll follow up with that. So Mike follows with...
Did you adjourn the meeting?
I did.
Okay. Says he did.